We're going to need a motion if he's on yet. He's on. Okay. Go ahead and answer. All right. Hello? Yes, me. He can't get on.
He has to sign into Zoom.
Have to sign into Zoom. While we're on the snake rope here, let me put you on speaker. Go ahead. You're on speaker.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I just don't have enough bandwidth here to get signed on. I mean, I've been messing with it for 20 minutes.
We should keep calling.
Do you all have a forum?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, I mean, I can join by cell if you have a vote. I mean, I can.
You're on right now on my cellphone. You want to go with the cell?
I make a motion to approve participation via cellphone for Chairman Rhodes due to a personal matter out of town.
Second.
Red motion and secondly, any discussions? Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Campbell?
Wait, it just logged. Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Harland? Mr. Harland, hold on.
President.
Mr. Pierce.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Harper, aye.
I lost it. Okay.
All right, before I go in, the next part, I would introduce two new members. Tom Robinson over here from my left and Steve Hodwick.
Robert.
Robert. Over here, there are two new members going on. E D A, and thanks for coming on. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as president.
And I have one question on the agenda. Didn't see the minutes from last time.
They're not done yet.
Okay.
President, I have to give a little call first.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Robinson?
President.
Mr. Brown?
President.
Mr. Harland?
President.
Mr. Horowitz?
President.
Mr. Pierce?
President.
Mr. Harper, president.
President.
Mr. Campbell?
President.
Chairman Rhodes.
Chairman Rhodes.
Yeah. Big president. All right, now we need a motion to adopt the agenda. I went out of order. My fault, people. I'm sorry.
You got your.
So I need a motion to adopt the amendments because I went and did roll call. You said you had a question. You had that mentioned.
Right, so now without the agenda, right, I'll move it. It's out there again in a second.
In the discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next presentation, it'd be item five from Kyle. Is Kyle on?
Whoop, there I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
I have a couple of questions for you before we get started in your presentation.
Sure.
When do we go get a copy of the amended first page one? We have never received anything since it was all done and we came over and read all the improvements.
I'm not sure why you don't have it. It was completed immediately after that meeting. I will send it again this evening.
Okay, because you have not received it, have you? But has that come to him? Now, has me got it? I'll just answer your question. Okay. All right, I have, this is me, because she told me I could speak fourth. I like to see a presentation, a paper in front of us or in front of me anyway before you start your presentation. So I have something legally to go by so I can see what you're doing and talking to us about it. If would that be a problem for the next meeting?
Not at all.
All right, thank you. And it's all right with the board for me to sign the agreement with them since Chairman Rhodes is not here, which we already approved, does that provide with any of that? Okay, all right. All right, go ahead, Kyle.
Excellent, so thank you for having me this evening. I was asked to kind of provide a timeline for phase two. And so hopefully that slide is up on the board. I don't know if you guys can't see. But, so just to kind of give you a sense of what we're going to be doing, just a reminder from our last presentation, the three primary efforts that we're doing for phase two is a more detailed real estate market analysis with a primary focus on identifying economic development opportunity sites within the county. We anticipate having that done by the end of August with an expected presentation to this board sometime immediately on or after September 1st. So I would imagine it'll be at the next board meeting following September 1st. Through the month of September, we're going to be updating and providing substantially greater detail in our fiscal impact. I know there was a lot of conversation last time we were all together around our model versus the previous model. And I'm happy to include in that analysis kind of a comparative between the two. And, but, we're going to be doing a more comprehensive fiscal impact model across all different land uses types, including agriculture. And then we're going to, I'm going to take the economic development goals that are created through this, that have been discussed through phase one process, that we're going to be working on through this process, and then bring back all of that information to you all in the October board meeting. And so present our detailed fiscal impact analysis and then present the, what I'll call the draft goals that is going to then drive the detailed implementation strategy. And I know we've talked in the past around, you know, some of the actions that R K G believes that the county can do towards executing on its economic development goals. But those are, those were kind of draft and more high level. We're going to be creating a detailed implementation plan with step-by-step action items for each one of our recommendations. And the expectation is to have in front of the board before your November meeting, a draft of that presentation, a draft of those recommendations. We'll present them in November and then go back and finalize the document hopefully by November 15th prior to Thanksgiving, that we all have plenty of time to take a look at it. And then in the December meeting, if there are any last comments, questions, or issues, we can address them. And then you can have your economic development plan before the end of the year.
Anybody have any questions?
Oh, I have one. Kyle, this timeline, somewhere along the line, do you meet back with the planning commission and interact with them?
So I would, I would welcome the opportunity to engage with the planning commission. I think that either we can have them part of the discussion in October when we're kind of talking about goals refinement and kind of going through all the data. But I, that is a recommendation for me. If you believe that there is a more opportune moment for us to meet with them, I am, I am all about making sure that they're included in this process.
Would it be better being a joint meeting with the planning commission and us all at the same time? And have open discussion with you, going over everything?
Absolutely. I think that, I think that if the input and feedback from the planning commission is valued by the E D C, then I'm all about having joint meetings so that they can hear the same things at the same time you all do.
Okay. What do you all think? Something we need to set up with the planning commission in October?
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Should definitely interact with them along the way somewhere.
Okay, so Steve, we've got a consensus. You think we can get this set up?
Yeah, yeah. Would you prefer, I guess first priority would be to have a joint work session that coincided with your work session?
Yes.
Rather than setting up another date?
I think it would be better.
Try and make that happen to see how the planning commission feels.
Okay. We could see what we can come up with with a few blocks over. And if anything changes, we'll get back with you if you don't mind, Kyle.
Not at all. And, and like, this is, this is our proposed timeline. If there is issues or concerns as you all talk about it or as we get into this process that you want to discuss and modify, I'm all ears. And so this is what we think the timeline should be. If, if the E D C or the planning commission or the county need to modify this, I'm all about having that conversation, trying to find something that works for everybody.
Okay, can you make sure the information that you could go over, the, or definitely for habit? So, planning commission, I have plenty of time to review it before our work session with you.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that any presentations I'm going to do get to you all a full week in advance.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kyle? Go ahead.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Uh, can you report? Steve?
Good evening. So I just wanted to give you an update. So we just changed over fiscal years, finished up F Y twenty-two. And wanted to let you know that E D A's budget was in good shape. If you recall, one of the only expenses the E D A took was in contracting with R K G. And after asking and getting approval from the Board of Supervisors to bring forward some more funds from previous year to cover that cost, that was all that was expended. The budget lines are, of course, the county's economic development budget. So included in budget lines would be dues to our regional E D A, the M P A. And then, as a kind of reminder of what the board or the E D A's request was for F Y twenty-three and what was approved, the professional services line was set at thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty. So that is $10,000 above the contract price for phase two with R K G allowing the E D A to make any other professional services requests within that limit. Again, we've got an M P A membership within these budget lines. Travel for convention and education includes any training that you might want, has a budget line of $2,500. Other operating supplies set at 500. And there is a grant match budget of $12,500. I'd also like to remind you that there is capital budget lines for the E D A. First is, well, for economic development, first is a broadband that was set aside years ago. There's still $225,000 left in that, and that is allocated to the all points broadband rollout. There's also over, a little over a million dollars in the C I P infrastructure funds. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand of that is allocated to finish out the broadband. But that leaves you about three quarters of a million dollars to, if you find an opportunity for anything like that, buying, selling property, put together a plan, that's what that money's for. You still have to go to the Board of Supervisors to get approval to use it, but that is what they set that money aside for. Any questions for budgets?
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. The $12,000 match, is that already obligated or did we do that?
No, that is new. So last year, we did an A F A D match grant for Bees needs farms, along with two other farms, Riverwatch and Carling. And this is that same number of what would be a max match for that grant. So if anyone else in that vein comes forward, or if you advertise for it, that would be set aside for that.
And then, so the only, one other question would be that the only funds that we need further approval to access are those set aside in the infrastructure fund?
Correct.
Any other question? You might want, you members on board here, maybe explain that grant a little further to them.
Sure, so Ms. Williams actually brought it to the county's attention that there was available a grant for, an infrastructure grant for small farms and the like agriculture. And you got extra points for if it was a regional or if it was an area of distress or if it included more than one farm. And the application that Ms. Williams brought forward actually included all of those things. So that gave us a two-to-one match with the state. We only had to put up the part one. They matched it twice over. And that is benefiting what was already approved. The grant is benefiting three dairy farms, two in King William and one in King and Queen. And King and Queens Economic Development is putting for some funds that kind of for the match on their end. But it was a joint effort to get the grant. And the grant is funded through, is coming through us. But that's for any kind of expansion on small farms and the like agriculture.
And I believe that goes twice a year now. It goes in May and it goes in December, November. So other farms that want to apply. I think there's other cash match grant opportunities through the state as well.
U S D A seem to have a number of others.
Yeah, U S D A. V X has a couple.
Thanks, Steve.
Sure.
Uh, please, so all the time? Well, I would just see if there's anything you have updated. Do you want to pick up before we move on?
No, no, just, I think the most important thing is just to keep things moving in the direction we're going.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much.
Okay. I guess next would be, sir, you want to give us an update what's going on with the farmers market?
Sure. So, planning for the two pilot farmers markets is going very well. We met this morning for our final meeting before the first farmer's market event. Right now, we have ten food and farmer vendors, six craft, seven county, two food trucks, and then four other vendors who signed up. So we have a pretty full evening, so it's exciting. We've designated the parking lots and decided where parking versus vendor space is going to be. So we'll be sending out that email to everybody who registered. I think there's two or three more that will be registering as well. I just need to follow up with them. So I think we have a good night planned for July. August, I didn't pay attention to whether most of these are coming back in August or not, Chris. They are. And I think there's a couple that couldn't come to July but may come to August. So we may have even more turnout in August.
Sorry, you said ten, what was it, ten vendors?
Ten farmers or bakers, food produce canners.
Then six.
Six craft vendors.
Then the rest, seven county, two food trucks.
Uh-huh. Four other, like the Farm Bureau, the, I think it's the football sign up, things like that. Millennial Farm Credit, who also, I think, covered the signs and bags. Is that correct, Chris?
Okay, you can add on your list, things that follow your account will be added free water for the people. We'll set the target, right?
Okay, great.
We want to set that up, so you can add that to your.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Sarah?
What kind of water?
Bottle water. Do you want drink water or will we take one?
Are we having information tent or how will we be represented?
For now, I don't, we haven't had any plans to. I, it is in all of the signage that it's sponsored by the E D A, but that's as far as we've gone. Is there, would we like to put something out?
Do we have that banner that you have going around that's all the?
If one, one more tent for a table and chairs, that can come there. I mean, probably wouldn't hurt to have one of us or two of us represented.
Sure. Do we have, do we have any paperwork to give out? I'm just wondering what we would.
No, this is great, thanks for coming. What does everyone else think? Like, try, oh, maybe, maybe dig up some old boards and stuff that.
Tourism, you mean, what do we have?
Well, just if we're going to represent, have, you know, you know, with ninety-nine dollar top, a tent for a table. You know, books would be on the table, and then maybe a lollipop. You know, some economics with their goals on, you know, economic development.
The list of the members, the goals.
For that, you can have a sign up sheet, case people have ideas what they're looking for in the county.
They were just, oh.
I'm gonna have some table and chairs because I ain't bringing my phone. We were trailer with me, the five, the tent, chair, table.
So Christina has extra tents. Christina with the extension office has extra tents. So we needed to borrow a tent. We could, I'm just.
I know we've all had.
So I have a farm, so I can't man it. You're going to be manning your tents, so we would need other volunteers.
I'm gonna be in between the two, I'll be with the phone here as well as, you know, I'm saying.
I will be there. I'll be glad to help.
I'll be at and I'll.
I'll be taking pictures, but I'll be roaming.
Yeah, yeah.
But it would be nice, you know, one person go from four to five, one go from five to six.
Sure.
Six to seven, that's just I D.
So I'll email Christina and ask her about borrowing a tent for the E D A. I have an extra table and chairs. I guess we just need to think about, you know, printing up a list of the members and our goals and maybe like, I don't know, a little box where they can throw ideas in or something.
All right, what time we plan?
Can we use some graphics from the comp plan?
We can use whatever you want for the comp plan. You can pull out the, it's kind of like what I sent the goals. You have a copy of the comp plan there so people can look through it. We just talk economics. I would say whoever.
We could also produce the, in the first phase, the R K G study to make that available. Have a couple of copies of that so people could produce.
Okay.
Uh, what time we?
I can plan to put together, I'll put together a one pager and I'll make sure that we have packets of the R K G study. And I'll pull, I'll print out the economic portion of the comp plan and have those three things and make sure there's plenty of copies up so we have stuff for the table. And I can plan to be there at four to make sure that it's there, or three-thirty?
I would say three-thirty. Yeah, we're asking the vendors to be there no later than three-thirty so they can set up the tents.
Remind me what day it is?
July twenty-second.
Absolutely.
Four to seven.
Wouldn't miss it for the world.
Yeah, it's gonna be good. Any other questions or thoughts? That was a great idea. Okay.
You good now?
I am.
Okay.
Right, a good one?
Yes.
I just thought we'd get a little rain today. Well, rain up, rain, it's up that way.
Steve? Secretary and trade? You're next, the Secretary of Trade and Commerce, Tor.
So a couple of weeks ago, we were alerted by Ms. Sherry Spring, who's our Middle Peninsula Alliance, the regional E D A. She's our representative for that. In fact, the M P A has a group, a board has not met in quite some time. So Ms. Spring is basically our volunteer liaison between Virginia Economic Development and us. So she let us know that the V E D P is coordinating Secretary of Commerce and Trade, a tour. It's going around the state, but King Will or the Middle Peninsula is set to be August twenty-fourth. And she is trying to set up sites to visit and wants to know from localities what sites are important to us for them to visit. This would be green space or industry that we've already got. However, right now, the, what exactly they're looking for has not been clarified. I talked to Ms. Spring today to see if she had gotten any updates. She has been trying to get more word out of Virginia Economic Development to see exactly what they're looking for. Because this is one day that this person is going to hit everything in the Middle Peninsula. So we really want to be specific with what they're going to see and what, what he wants to see. What is the purpose of this visit? So just keep that in the back of your mind. As soon as we know more information, we'll let you know. But any sites, anything that you can think of that would be good for economic development for someone from the state to see, let us know.
Okay. I guess looking mainly for potential development.
Potential, to go along with, you know, Virginia Economic Development, it's potential areas, potential sites, as well as how to expand existing sites.
Okay. Six months for a plan?
So this is something that all the departments in the county have been asked to do and that administration has put together. Each department's got goals for the next six months. And Mr. Ashcraft will be reviewing those at the end to see how far we've come. And this is kind of our way, we, we create these goals according to what was passed in the budget as well as the comp plan for where we should be going, not just day-to-day items, but really like what are the projects that the county is working towards? What are our goals? And part of that includes economic development. So these are the county's economic development goals, of which the E D A plays a major role. But just to say, there's, there's a little bit of a distinction there. So don't think, looking at these six numbers, that this is what the county is telling the E D A to do. This is just what we think staff will be working towards in number six, Vision of Economic Development Authority. These are the items that have been spoken of with the E D A a number of times. So that's what we anticipating working towards a staff support to the E D A. So as, as staff with the county, we'd be looking at this business roundtable. Strashcraft has mentioned that a couple of times. And then, of course, what I passed out with economic development portion of the comp plan. Just mentioned Trade and Commerce, Secretary, tourism, ARPA funding. So there were funds that were given to Virginia Tourism and allocated by locality. So these are not part of the funds that have already been received by the county. These sit with Virginia Tourism and, but it's not, it's, and they're used kind of like a grant, except there's no, it's not competitive. It's just that we put in a plan of how to use them. And if it meets their criteria, then we get the money. It's $30,000. This is for market, tourism marketing. It's not for infrastructure. It's not for building things. It's for marketing. Right now, the county has a, has an agreement along with West Point with a consultant, this Melissa Anderson, who, this is kind of her, her thing. So we're going to be working in discussion with West Point on how best to use those. But just keep that in mind, that it's something the county is working towards. Ms. Anderson keeps the website, visit West Point, King William. And occasionally, there are new articles that are up there, things to see and do, a lot of pictures of King William and West Point. And then, business retention and E D A goals, just like we've talked about. These are pretty much set by you, meat processing, ag ed facility, buying and selling properties, pilot farmer's market, greenhouse, phase two of R K G study, explore commerce park, partnership development, and update the website, do something, a new website that would really compile all the county's sites and opportunities for economic development.
If we have, what do we have now? I've tried to access it. I'll tell you, do we have something that, potential sites?
We've got, so the county does not have a list of potential sites on the website. Virginia Economic. Virginia Economic VVP does. And of that, on that site, I was, I think we spent some time on that when we had our all day, all morning work session that Saturday. And as Mr. Hodges at the time elaborated on why there are only four sites in King William on there. And they were advised by VVP at the time to only pick your top sites, don't want to put them all out there. One of those sites, I believe, has recently come off the market. And could stand to review. But we also, as a county, we don't need to try and cherry pick our best sites or put those out there. We can really compile a list, because we're all about just even the small guy coming, and where he can, he can set up shop.
So this new website is county, I mean, it's not going to any.
No, it's county, it would be on the county website, yeah.
I think it was about a month ago, maybe, you'd sent, had sent out a list of our neighboring counties and their kind of business development site. And it basically had all the sites with boxes, car counts. And we were talking about doing something very similar, maybe a separate website, or, but having all the properties for the possibly smallest company to the, to a very large one.
They bring, King William County is doing a good job of that, you know, the dead website, all the marketing, Marshall Prom, they will just say. I think there was, I can't remember the name of that website, I think at the, when that was started, there was a regional program that was really helping a lot of these websites take off.
Go Now, or Now Something.
Yeah, like Go Virginia, you know, Go King William, Go King and Queen, but somehow we.
The King and Queen, if I remember right, was like a simple Go Daddy, you know, it's like, but, but what, but I kept and.
Yeah.
It's actually on their county website now, too, and on the EDA.
Right, for us, if we, if you go to EDA on our website, it's valid to you guys. But it kind of is a a circle without getting too much, a whole lot of information on it. So we're, we're planning on updating that and improving it.
I'll tell you, some of the stuff that I pulled up on county website, some of the, a lot of information needs to be updated. People, the people off the board, because a lot of it has changed. I'll bring that to you all. Okay, well, last time I looked, it had, that's why, while we've helped.
This branch has been doing a pretty good job of keeping that up to date since she's started.
Any other questions for Steve?
I have one question, and it's more about the email Chris sent us, where it showed the transfers of the businesses that, or the three mid-larger transfers that had to happen. And one being the one at thirty and I'm going to be with the family, you know, the farm, yeah, but, right there at thirty and three sixty. Do we know what their plan is, or what the people who bought it, what their kind of outlook is for what they're doing?
Not exactly, but that's also a closed session item.
Sorry.
I'm gonna go back to the tour with the Secretary of Trade and Commerce. He's gonna go around the Middle Peninsula, pass through King William, and you and Percy are probably gonna show him.
Probably, or any EDA member that might be available. That's the idea, but again, we just got this notice about it, hey, put this together, and then we're asking for, yeah, asking them for a little more guidance on what they're looking for, and then we're going to have a meeting of all the different localities that are included in the Middle Peninsula Regional, to really plan out, map out where to go. But when we have a little more information, we'd love your input on what sites to go see.
All right, well, thank you. I hope for public comments, anybody who publicly like to speak. I'm gonna put public comments, if somebody wants to speak. And our next meeting will be on August tenth at seven P.M. And I need from the board a motion for the.
Mr. Vice Chair, in accordance with section two point two dash three seven one one A five of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Economic Development Authority of King William County convene in closed meeting to discuss a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made, because discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion, second, any discussion? Pro call, Chris.
Thank you, Stan.
So I think that would go close that second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Pro call, Chris, please. Okay, no action, that's thirty.
Got it, thanks, me. Mr. Chair, I move that the King William County Economic Development Authority Board approves standing resolution one SR one in accordance with section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, certifying that the closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information.
Lo, should I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of them.
Call the roll.
Pro call, please.
You have say, yes.
Okay. See. Eugene was asking, as well as me, on August the tenth, I'll have a, well, I can make it, but I have a conflict. Eugene came, we just wanted if we could move it to eleven. Because Ivy of Laney, feeding in Charlottesville, to go over. That, because your student, Tom, you're ready to send him in. And I had my annual co-op meeting that night. Next day, fifth, Thursday? I'm just asking, I can get here, but I will be pushed. I won't be able to attend thirty, but it's, so definitely. All right, can we go to the following week, is there a problem? Okay. Okay.
I am, I'm, sir.
Yep.
All right, I'll go ahead to the seventeenth. And I guess we have, you need to notify all KG. Do we change it to seventeen, not the tenth? What's he gonna do? I'll wait and see what's on the list.
That was part of its work plan, but not necessarily.
All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All favor say aye? You got that one?